Good afternoon. This public hearing is now called to order. Today is Wednesday, January 21st, 2015, and the time is 10 minutes after 2:00. This is a public hearing on a proposal to amend Article 161, Animals, and Article 11, Reportable Diseases and Conditions of the New York City Health Code. My name is Martha Robinson. I'm Associate General Counsel of the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. Also here today to hear your comments are Norma Torres, who is the Director of the Office of Veterinary Public Health Services, and Mariel Morino, Assistant Commissioner for Veterinary and Pest Control Services. Also here is Setlana Burdenik, who is Assistant to the Secretary to the Board of Health. She's outside at the moment. The purpose of today's hearing is to elicit your comments and public comments and information to assist the Board of Health in determining whether to adopt this proposal. A notice of intention and notice of public hearing regarding the proposal was published in the City Record on December 12th, 2014. A copy of the first page of the notice of intention has been provided to the stenographic reporter, taking notes to include in the record of the hearing. Persons wishing to speak at the hearing were asked to preregister. Eight people are preregistered to speak today, and I will call on you in the order in which you preregistered. If you wish to speak and have not registered, you may register outside at the table. Speakers are limited to five minutes. If you have any written comments that you wish to submit as well, we will accept them here today. The first speaker I have here is Vanessa Gruden. Is she here?
She won't be making it to that. She has a emergency.
Okay. Second person is David Gaines. Mr. Gaines? And when you get to the table, please identify yourself, spell your name for the reporter and any organizational affiliates you have. Also, press the red button in order to speak. We're only speaker in front of you.
It turns red.
It turns red when you press it.
My name is David Gaines, G-A-I-N-E-S, and I am the Director of the American Ferret Association's Legal and Legislative Affairs Committee. I'd like to thank the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene for providing us this opportunity to comment today on behalf of our members in support of these proposed amendments. They reflect the growing acceptance in the United States of ferrets as domestic companion animals, something evidenced by the reversal of ferret bans in 2004 in Minneapolis, Minnesota, and in 2005 in Dallas, Texas, and Columbia, Missouri, as well as the current pending addition of ferrets to the District of Columbia's list of permitted animals. At the same time, according to the American Veterinary Medical Association's U.S. Pet Ownership and Demographics Source Book, there were 334,000 households with ferrets in 2012, as opposed to 505,000 in 2007. I attribute this 34 percent drop to a combination of the fading away of the so-called "ferret fad," grown on by movies such as Along Came Polly and celebrities such as Paris Hilton, along with increased understanding on the part of the general public of the special and unique requirements of having a ferret as part of one's family. A trend towards fewer ferrets being taken care of by better-educated people should be taken as a positive sign by those concerned with ferret legalization in New York City. There are four main areas of concern regarding the adoption of these amendments. One, ferrets are wild animals. Ferrets do not and cannot live in the wild. They have been domesticated for centuries. This is the consensus in the veterinary zoological and animal welfare communities. The ASPCA, American Veterinary Medical Association, American Museum of Natural History, Humane Society of the United States, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and the International Species Information System all classify the ferret as a domesticated animal. Monroe County, Florida, home to Everglades National Park, and arguably one of the most ecologically sensitive localities in the United States, specifically lists ferrets within its definition of "domesticated companion animals." Two, ferrets are dangerous animals and vicious biters prone to cause harm to people. There is no evidence that ferrets as a species are prone to cause harm. The cases of ferret bites that do occur are far fewer in number than those cases involving dogs and cats. When testifying on behalf of the ASPCA in June 1999 against the adoption of the Board's current ferret prohibition, Lisa Weisberg noted that in 1998, the last year ferrets were permitted in the city, there were, according to the Board's own records, 7,882 reported bites in the city by dogs, cats, or ferrets. 7,879 of these, or 99.96 percent, were by dogs or cats. As all people with significant ferret experience know, ferrets are bred specifically to be docile, friendly, playful, cooperative companion animals, and indeed, it is their legendary playfulness and clown-like behavior that are not only the main source of their appeal as companion animals, but are the characteristic traits of the species. Three, ferrets are liable to escape into neighboring dwellings and attack people. The danger of ferrets escaping unmasked and terrorizing apartment buildings, duplexes, and row houses is a tremendous exaggeration. If ferrets were inclined as a species to do that, there would be multiple reports of this activity from the numerous large cities where ferrets are permitted. The fact is that, in our experience, although ferrets do escape from their homes, as do cats and dogs, it is not something that happens very often. We occasionally are made aware of reports of ferrets trapped in walls or laundry exhaust pipes, and the resolution in virtually every case is a sad one for the frightened or confused ferret, but it involves no contact at all with neighboring humans. Four, ferrets increase the risk of humans getting rabies. Like all mammals, ferrets are susceptible to the rabies virus, but the incidence of ferrets in the United States contracting it is extremely low, less than 50 reported cases nationwide since 1950, and there is not one reported case on record of ferret-to-human rabies transmission in this country. There is a USDA-approved rabies vaccine made specifically for ferrets, and the AFA supports its required use as indicated in the proposals. According to the most recent U.S. Census Bureau estimates, 84.3 percent of the USA's 319 million citizens live in places where they're permitted to choose a ferret as their companion animal. Subtract California, and that figure rises to 96.1 percent. If this were an election or an opinion poll, we would call that an overwhelming landslide. We agree with the many media accounts that describe this issue as silly. Yes, it's silly that a ferret is wild and dangerous in the Bronx and Queens, but then magically becomes no more of a concern than a gerbil as soon as one steps into Yonkers or Nassau County. New York City residents, who want nothing more than to be allowed to bring the domesticated companion animal of their choice home with them, deserve to have that opportunity and to be treated fairly and equitably. Thank you for your time and your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. The next person I have registered is Nancy Chinchar. Is she here?
Yeah.
Please identify yourself and spell your name for the reporter.
Sure. My name is Nancy Chinchar. It's C-H-I-N-C-H-A-R. And I own two grooming shops in Manhattan. They're both called Downtown Dog House. One is in Chelsea, and one is in Gramercy. Thank you all for allowing us to speak today. I appreciate your giving me a chance to voice concerns. They're not about ferrets. My contention is that grooming businesses should not be required to obtain proof of active vaccinations. Grooming establishments, particularly in New York City, that don't include boarding facilities are almost exclusively small businesses, most with fewer than 10 employees. And gathering these records puts an undue burden on us in the following ways. It costs us taxable revenue because we are frequently turning away clients who do not have the records. Many of these clients have legitimate reasons for not having the records. They may have medical reasons, or they may not have access to the records anymore, particularly people who adopt animals from the Humane Society, where it's nearly impossible to get the paperwork once they leave. This forces us to increase payroll, an estimated $8,000 a year, because I estimate we spend about 10 hours a week chasing these records down for our clients so that we aren't turning away business, and this forces us to abandon other areas of business because I don't have the time or the payroll to increase and do other areas. This happens despite the fact that grooming shops that do not offer boarding are typically different from those that do. Independent grooming shops crate animals separately at all times, so there's less exposure between dogs in a grooming shop than between dogs walked on the street. We don't expose pets to the causes of illness that the vaccinations purport to prevent, like if animals have an open wound in a fight, or they're not exposed to other animals' feces, which are things that carry these diseases. So the laws that's written does nothing to protect dogs from these diseases in their normal life. It just makes the very unlikely possibility that they'd be exposed to illness at a grooming shop even less very unlikely. The laws that's written is inconsistent and ambiguous and possibly harmful to pets. The American Animal Hospital Association has recently updated their recommended vaccination protocols to prevent over-vaccinating pets, but veterinarians are not required to follow these protocols. Some practices that we deal with require that their clients be vaccinated more often than others in order for their clients to be up to date on their records or on their vaccinations. Clients from such a practice would appear to be out of compliance, while others who see doctors who adhere to the recommended protocols would be in compliance, though they both would contain the same exposure to the vaccination. So one pet would be groomable and the other would not, despite their having identical levels of vaccination. Many veterinarians recommend that older pets stop being vaccinated, but these pets still require grooming for optimal health. So when we're turning away animals, they sometimes face health issues caused by untreated or severely matted coats, such as untreated hot spots, hematomas, skin rashes, things that follow from not grooming. Other pet-related businesses, such as dog walkers and city-funded dog parks, which generate far more risky exposure between pets, do not face this regulation. They don't face any regulation. Lastly, if the concern is spreading disease to humans, the law is overreaching. According to the CDC, there have been two cases of animal-to-human rabies in New York in the past three years, and in both of those cases, the person involved was exposed to the animal in other countries. One was exposed in Afghanistan, and one was exposed in Ghana. And I ask that you please consider these issues and not require grooming establishments to fall under the umbrella of boarding kennels. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person registered to speak is Ellie Wong.
Okay. Let's bring the prop.
Just one is one.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Wong, you have five minutes. Please identify yourself and spell your name.
Yes. My name is Ellie Wong, E-L-L-Y. My last name is W-O-N-G, and I'm the owner of Townhouse Grooming in Chelsea. I've been in business for over 13 years, and only until recently have we required proof of rabies. And we've never had an issue because all we do is cut hair, checkups, vaccinations, medical needs. That's someone else's business. Cutting hair is my business. So unless it really affects us, that's not business that we like to turn away. So if you think of yourself as a pet owner, like you've vaccinated your dog as required by law once or multiple times, your dog has developed antibodies for the next 10 years. So as an owner, you know, people don't want to hear that we can't groom their pets, like you have to provide documentation. Those chances are your documentation is like mine. It's, I have to look for it. It's under the multiple drawers somewhere. And I don't want to tell you that I don't want to groom your dog, because I do, because I know that the chances of me getting rabies from an animal is very, very remote. Like, that dog would have to have rabies, which we don't have in New York City, really. And the disease would have to infect the brain, and they'd have to come in within that 10-day window before it dies. So it's that remote. And like Nancy had mentioned, a lot of older dogs and cats that never leave their New York City apartment, they no longer need to have rabies every year, and we've been told that by many vets. And it's just to groom their animals. So we're a professional business. We ask for a lot of relevant info, so we get the name, the address, phone numbers, and I don't mind asking for that. I just don't think that rabies is one of them. You know, we ask about fleas and cysts and skin conditions and, you know, other things, you know, that are relevant. And it is a bit of a ivory. It's a bit of a turn-off. Like, a lot of dogs that don't have to come in for grooming, like labs and Frenchies and Chihuahuas, you know, we ask for this information, and we're sure to probably lose their business because it's pretty inconvenient. And as a New Yorker, I don't blame them, because convenience is pretty paramount here. You know, they don't want to pay and be inconvenienced just to get their dogs bathed. And finally, pet services, it's, you know, we're a grooming shop. It's not like a one-size-fits-all, you know. We're not the same as doggy daycares, where dogs do interact with one another, or shelters, where the dog's histories are unknown. Dogs do not come in contact with each other, and they have homes, and they have parents, and they bring them on in for grooming. And so for 13 years, I've never, we've never had a problem, and 20 years prior to me taking over Townhouse, there was never a problem. My second issue is with removing the heating element from our cage dryers. I understand the issue over it. It's just, it's very, very rare, especially with how they make grooming equipment these days. I have cage dryers, and they are a huge asset, and they're efficient, and they can be very gentle on the animal. Because we groom a lot of older dogs and groom a lot of cats, and old dogs can't stand very well or very long to endure hand-lo drying. And cats, in general, they never leave the house, so they don't, they're scared enough, and it's stressful enough. They don't like to be handled, and they hate the noise. So cage drying is far more comfortable a process for them. And our dryers are very safe. They're all temperature-controlled, and they have an automatic shut-off. And our client's experience is very important to us and our business. It's important to you. That's why we're all here. So they feel everything that we feel, and so, you know, if you got into the shower and you sit outside, it would be cold, and I think that it is cold for them, especially during the winter months. So please let them have a little bit of heat. We do monitor well. We're very aware of the equipment and the tools that we deal with. No one can police us better than us, because it's hard to do business. It is hard enough in the city and with the competition that surrounds us. And if we don't police ourselves, our business will suffer. And the pets that we groom in their best interest have to come for us, because, you know, I'm very lucky to do something I love and that I can make a living from it, so I would never jeopardize that. So I urge you to consider the current times. Rabies is very important and should be acquired by law, but I don't think it should be enforced by grooming shops. And cage dryers are, they're not only efficient for businesses, but they could be, you know, kind and gentle for, like, it's a less stressful alternative than having to stand there and get a grooming. That's it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. The next person I have registered is Ariel Jasper.
I'm Ariel Jasper, A-R-I-E-L-J-E-S-P-R.
Could you put first the button there?
Oh, sorry. Okay. First, I want to start by saying thank you. I really appreciate that the Board took the time to listen to this petition regarding ferrets. I know a lot of times in our city, it's usually done in a different way, where an individual doesn't really get a chance to voice their concerns, or it's a board, so I really appreciate it. Regardless of what happens here today, I applaud the Board, because it's showing that you do represent all New Yorkers and you are concerned with everyone's health, which brings me to today's issue. During the proposal, Dr. Richardson asked what was to be gained by removing ferrets from the list of prohibited animals in New York City. Today, I sit here to say the gain will be this: improving the quality of life for New Yorkers who already share their homes with ferrets, and for those who want a ferret because additional dog or cat may not fit in with their lifestyle. We know through documented and peer-reviewed literature that animals have a positive impact on the health of their owners, and a city with so many stressors and health concerns, a little positiveness can go a long way. I won't sit here and say this will be revolutionary for the whole city, but for those who share their homes with ferrets, it would make all of the difference. That is what this issue has always been about. I can say with confidence that ferrets pose no major health threats to the general public because they have always been in our city, our state, and many other cities across the globe, and none of the Board's views have ever been realized. The risk is so minimal, the CDC does not even track their bites. Is it possible to Google "ferret attacks" and get a few hints back? Yes. Over the course of years, you may find two or three incidents with some dubious doubt about ferret harming a child, but how many more hits are generated by the hour of children being outright killed by dogs and cats, which are perfectly legal within our city limits? I ask that the Board look past these outdated views and show the world that New York City is better than this, that we are a city governed by those who use facts and logic. Then maybe, just maybe, we can make our grand city a little bit brighter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jasper. The next person registered to speak is Jennifer Riley.
My name is Jennifer Riley, R-I-L-E-Y, and I'm testifying on behalf of the New York City Bar Association's Animal Law Committee. Thank you for this opportunity to testify on the proposed amendments to Article 11 and 161 of the New York City Health Code. The committee supports the proposed amendments subject to recommendations. In sum, this proposal would amend Article 161, Section B4, and Article 11, Sections 11.29 of the New York City Health Code to remove the prohibition on pet ownership of domestic ferrets and require certain public health safeguards with respect to such animals kept as pets, including immunizations against rabies, sterilization, including at the time of sale or transfer, and restraint when outdoors. In the majority of U.S. states, including New York State, it is legal to keep a domestic ferret as a pet. However, New York City law currently prohibits the keeping of ferrets as pets. In May 2014, the Commissioner of Health and Mental Hygiene granted a petition from an individual asking that the Board of Health consider amending Article 161 to remove ferrets from the list of animals prohibited as pets in the city. That proposal initiated this process and opened public comment period on whether ferret ownership should be legalized. The current prohibition on ferret ownership has not curtailed ownership within New York City and has detrimentally impacted the health and welfare of legally-owned ferrets. Indeed, illegal ferret owners may be apprehensive of taking their pets to the veterinarian in fear of being reported. Instead, such owners may attempt to provide care for sick or dying ferrets or utilize veterinarians unskilled in ferret care. Domestic ferrets are recognized as enjoyable household companions and their minimal health or safety risks associated with keeping such animals with proper vaccinations as pets. As recognized by the sterilization requirements for dogs and cats owned in New York City, sterilization is necessary to prevent overpopulation of ferrets and result in burden on the city shelter system. We, the New York City Bar Association Animal Law Committee, support the proposed amendments subject to the following recommendations: to ensure the humane treatment of ferrets and to prevent overpopulation in New York City. First, we recommend that Section 161B4 be amended to prohibit the sale of ferrets by city pet shops. Humane and proper ferret ownership requires a high level of commitment. Ferrets sleep the majority of the day, and when awake, ferrets are highly active. As such, ferrets require significant attention and supervision, including ferret-proofing of one's home to ensure the ferret's safety. Given the time commitments that may not be readily apparent to inexperienced ferret owners, there is a significant likelihood that ferrets may be abandoned or relinquished to the city animal shelters, that are already overcrowded with cats, dogs, and rabbits. Accordingly, a ban on the sale of ferrets by city pet shops is necessary to prevent further overcrowding at the already overburdened city shelters. Next, we recommend that Section 161.01B4 be amended to prohibit the dissenting of ferrets. In general, ferrets have a natural musky scent that is present regardless of spaying or neutering. Dissenting is a surgical procedure in which the anal sacs are removed from the animal in an attempt to remove the animal's musky odor. However, the source of this scent originates in the oil of the ferret's skin, which is more pronounced during an intact ferret's reproductive cycle. Spaying or neutering reduces most, but not all, of the odor. Accordingly, surgical removal of these scent glands does not remove all natural body scents, and is considered by some veterinarians to be inhumane for ferrets and misleading to consumers. For the aforementioned reasons, the committee supports the proposed amendments subject to the recommendations discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person registered is Andy Schulman.
My name is Andy Schulman, S-C-H-U-L-M-A-N. I am the owner of Doggy Style NYC, a boutique and grooming shop in New York City. I'm here today to offer my feedback on why the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene's rule, Section 161.15, Keeping of Small Animals for Sale and Boarding, puts an undue burden on small grooming only, non-daycare boarding facilities businesses in New York City. The rule requires dogs and cats that come for grooming be vaccinated against rabies, distemper, adenovirus, parainfluenza, and bordetella, and states that if the owner cannot show proof of these vaccinations, the shop should turn the dog away. As grooming shop owners, it is our responsibility to provide a hygienic environment where surfaces are constantly cleaned and disinfected, which prevents the spread of communicable viruses. We are also responsible to keep the dogs apart from one another in separate kennels, which further reduces the risk of dogs passing along illnesses. It is a responsibility of the owner to make sure his or her dog is healthy whenever the dog is around other animals. When dogs come for grooming, they have minimal interaction with one another, since they are kept separated throughout the process. They have way more contact with other dogs, along with potential health risks, like unclean feces or fresh pools of urine when they are out walking the streets of New York City or playing in New York City dog parks. Spreading of the viruses listed by the DOH is easy to avoid by following common-sense cleaning and disinfecting protocols. For example, distemper, adenovirus, and parvovirus are spread by dogs coming into direct contact with either fresh urine, feces, blood, or saliva. If all of the surfaces in the grooming area are properly disinfected, this becomes a non-issue. Bordetella is a bit trickier, since it can be spread through a variety of ways: through aerosols in the air, one dog could sneeze and another dog could breathe in some of the discharge; directly from dog to dog, they could sniff each other nose to nose or nose to butt while walking on the street; or through germs on contaminated objects, which could include a water ball or ball in the dog park. Unfortunately for dogs, the bordetella vaccination is not guaranteed to prevent the spread of the illness. It does, however, lessen the duration should a dog become infected. Think of it like a flu vaccination. It doesn't guarantee that you won't get the flu, so not everyone opts to get the shot. Some people are advised by their vet not to get certain vaccinations, such as bordetella, for specific health reasons. These non-vaccinated dogs still need to be groomed, so what are they to do? With regard to rabies, the city requires that all owners vaccinate against rabies. Therefore, it should be the city's job to ensure that dog owners are following the rule, not a grooming shop. As far as I know, there are no rules regarding vaccinations other than rabies for those of us who bring our dogs to New York City dog parks or walk the streets of the city, where dogs are generally very social. Therefore, why does a grooming shop have to bear the burden of checking and keeping up with paperwork, calling vets, and potentially turning away clients and losing income? This makes no sense, since dogs have minimal to no contact while in the grooming shop. I'm not saying that dogs should not be properly vaccinated. What I am saying is that the owner should be responsible for their dog's health and wellness, and that grooming shops should be responsible for keeping sanitary conditions. Lastly, I will comment on the potential banning of cage and box dryers. The dryers are completely safe when used properly and with common sense. There is no reason why a competent groomer should There is no reason why a competent groomer should have to do without a very useful tool because of poor judgment displayed by an uninformed and unprofessional few. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration on these issues.
Thank you, Ms. Schulman. The next person registered is Steve Gruber. Is he here?
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Gruber, that's G-R-U-B-E-R. And I'm the Director of Communications for the Mayor's Alliance for New York City's Animals. And I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to offer comments. I'll be very brief. Mayor's Alliance is a 501(c)(3) charity. We've been working since 2003 with the city and Animal Care and Control to help to save the lives of healthy and treatable dogs and cats. And while we work collaboratively with ACNC, we're not a city agency, we are a nonprofit. Mayor's Alliance for New York City's Animals does support the changes to Article 161 of the New York City Code proposed by the Department of Health that would allow ferrets as pets in New York City. We believe that ferrets can be excellent pets for people who are trained and have the ability to care for them. We also agree with the requirement set forth in the amendment that ferrets be vaccinated against rabies and that they be spayed or neutered at an age that's safe for the ferrets and not necessarily an age that's safe for or preferred by ferret readers. Lastly, our mantra is "Adopt, don't buy." So this applies to ferrets as well. And we would urge the Department of Health to, if it as it's within their purview, to influence any decisions about prohibiting the sale of ferrets in pet stores. This would help to prevent them from being bred in mills, similar to puppy mills, where many of them will wind up in the city shelters. Thank you.
Thank you. Dylan Miller.
Thank you, I'm Dylan Miller, D-U-I-L-A-N-M-I-L-L-E-R. I represent no organization and no organization represents me. I'm just a person who has seen firsthand the amount of devastation a single ferret can create. Ferrets are not appropriate city pets. They get depressed if they're kept in cages, whom among us wouldn't? And yet, if they're allowed to roam freely, they mark their territory far and wide. Over Christmas, my girlfriend was asked to feed her neighbor's ferret for two weeks. And the ferret was free range. And in a matter of days, he had soiled nearly the entire apartment, including crawling into the dresser of their children and soiling the children's clothes. So while I feel like ferrets might be great pets for other cities or other places, I don't think they're appropriate in New York City. Thank you.
Somebody named Isis Vera.
Hello, my name is Isis Vera, that's I-S-I-S, last name E is Victor, E-R-A. And I've been a ferret owner since 2001, along with being a member of the Greater Chicago Ferret Association and a founding member of the New York City Ferret Club. Let's just say that I've been owning ferrets upwards of now fifteen years, I guess. And I lived in New York City, Chicago, and they make a great apartment pet for those who are allergic to dogs or cats. That means that with the gaining popularity which the media has drawn to owning ferrets in New York metro area, it is very important to uphold and implement the commercial sales ban prohibiting the sales in pet shops and non-licensed breeders within the five boroughs, similar to that of rabbits that was done in 2014. In 2013, the Animal Care and Control of New York City took in over thirty-three thousand animals as noted in their year-end report. We can only anticipate that this number will grow when the health ban is lifted and the ferrets may become the next hit pet. Our group alone has been contacted by over four hundred people, two hundred being those in New York City, many of them interested in owning ferrets for the very first time. Unlike pocket cage pets, ferrets require specialized diets and regular medical care, like cats and dogs. Due to the health ban in 1999, there are no longer easily accessible emergency or regular veterinary care in the boroughs along with ferret-specific shelters. Many owners who live in the city often travel outside the city to New Jersey or Long Island in order to get their animal cares. And if there's an emergency at 4:00 AM, they have little to no hope unless they have a car that can drive them out of the city limits. Ferrets are considered exotic and exotic pets, and not all veterinarians are even qualified to care for them or see them. Unable to cover medical costs or access to medical care is currently the number one reason for ferrets to be surrendered in New York City, the second being not knowing how much work is needed to own an animal. The New York City Ferret Club's mission is to help educate the public and ferret ownership in hopes to help lessen the number of homeless ferrets in New York City. Even with the health ban in effect, there are many citizens that own and acquire ferrets in the city. Many of these ferrets are smuggled into the city, end up owning priceless and the city shelters. Empire Ferrets, a Facebook group that came to develop late in 2013, has now become a virtual shelter with a group of dedicated members from the metro area to help rehome ferrets, often cases of rescuing them and transporting them to shelters outside the city. On average, the group helps rehome a ferret a week. And now we're seeing a rise in cases of people impulsive by them due to media attention. Though the Ferret Club of New York City is dedicated to helping the public education, it is imperative to also consider the ramifications that it will have once the health ban is lifted and how that will affect the New York City shelters plus neighboring shelters like Hudson Valley Ferret Rescue in New Jersey and the Ferret Association of Connecticut. As many people have said today, ferrets make great pets and can live upwards to ten years. Their owners come from all walks of life, from being a creative director for an app development company, a designer at luxury rent, or even students who are trying to make a change. The list can go on. But in the end, we all live and love New York City and ask for this amendment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Veronica Nizama.
Hi, my name is Veronica Nizama, that's V-E-R-O-N-I-C-A-N-I-Z-A-M-A. So, good afternoon. I'm a ferret owner from Queens and one of the co-founders of the New York City Ferret Club. And I'd like to thank the board for your time today. I'd like to start off by saying that the domestic pet ferret is a great pet for the typical New Yorker. They can sleep over twenty hours a day and are usually confined in a cage when its owner is away, similarly to crating a dog, but without all the guilt. They can be litter trained like a cat, make little to no noise, and don't need that much room. They're perfectly suited for apartment life and can be a great option for people who want to have a pet but have cat or dog allergies. They are extremely affectionate, energetic, and curious little animals that make a great pet for individuals and families alike. Additionally, they would make great therapy pets for those dealing with anxiety, depression, and other health issues. Another issue brought up during the original proposal was the idea that ferrets could get into other people's apartments. And I'd like to state, as a ferret owner, that mine have yet to reveal their secret superpower to break through their wall. So unlike rabbits, guinea pigs, and other rodents, ferrets are carnivores. They do not have teeth that need to be constantly ground down, hence they're not the type of pet that bites on wires or bite through wood, et cetera. Yes, it's true that ferrets can find themselves in tight spaces, but they cannot fit in a hole meant for a rat, for example. While it's not impossible for a ferret to end up in another apartment, you would need some rather large holes in your apartment and someone else is in the same building to encounter this issue. It seems like a pretty rare occurrence. Where do we draw the line then? Does the pet owner not share some responsibility in controlling their pet? Most people leash their dogs, crate them, or use baby gates to control their pets' whereabouts. Would proper restraint of an animal not also be expected from a ferret owner or any pet owner for that matter? Aggression was another one of the topics brought up at the proposal that personally upset me. My ferrets have never bitten anyone before, and I felt comfortable leaving my niece with them when she was as young as two. I can assure you, a two-year-old is not very gentle with any creature. Yet my boys were both patient with her, even gave her kisses for all the petting that she gave them. That's not to say that ferrets can't bite. All animals with a mouth can bite. But it takes patience and persistence for pet parents to raise any animal to not bite. We need to remember that ferrets are domestic animals, animals bred repeatedly to achieve submissive calm and obedient traits. I originally hailed from Miami, Florida, and I lived there for over twenty years. I had a similar experience in that I was always bombarded with horrifically negative and false information on pit bulls. If you're not aware, pit bull terriers are banned even to this day within Miami-Dade County. I was under the impression that they were aggressive, unpredictable, and borderline wild. I'll be honest, when I first moved to New York City over five years ago, I was extremely nervous walking outdoors next to these thought-blow killers. I mean, pit bulls are all over the city. It didn't take much investigative work to see that these nanny dogs are the sweetest, most patient dogs out there. Yes, of course, there are aggressive pit bulls. But is that their true nature or is that twisted nurture? It's misinformation, sensationalism in the press, it's just a bunch of unknowns. So I ask those making a vote today, would we, as responsible pet owners, parents, wives, husbands, aunts, uncles, cousins, and friends, would we want an aggressive animal in our home? Why would we fight for the right to own an animal we thought would put ourselves or our loved ones at risk? There are millions of ferrets in the USA, and I assure you that there are thousands, if not more, within our city. Most exotic pets will see them, most pet stores will sell ferret-specific items as well. And if you don't believe me, I encourage you to walk into any Petco, Petsmart, or Petland in five boroughs and see for yourself that they sell ferret food, litter, bedding, toys, and so on. If no one had ferrets in the city, there wouldn't be businesses catering towards them. New York City is a progressive city, it's an open city, and I wish that they could take this moment to prove that you care to listen to its citizens. And if you haven't heard of massive ferret attacks in the city, that's because they're not happening. We are here, we're not abandoning our sweet domesticated non-aggressive pets. We are responsible pet owners and we're begging to be able to take our pets to the vet without fear, be able to enjoy a vacation and leave our ferrets at a capable boarding facility, or even just go outside and let them feel the sun or the grass beneath their paws. We need to stop making this a joke and address the added stress that we put on ferret owners daily by making their pets banned. No matter what the board decides today, according to the American Ferret Association, ferrets are still the third most popular pet in the nation. The majority of forty-eight states in the country still allow ferrets as pets. And the largest ferret farm in the country is just a few hours' drive north of here upstate. Ferrets will not be leaving the city anytime soon. And I encourage the Health Department to not ignore the issue and finally allow us to keep them. Please find us, make us register, do whatever you think it takes to make the law beneficial to the city. We've been ready for decades to take proper legal responsibility for our beloved pets, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joel Bouyan.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Joel Bouyan, J-O-E-L-Bouyan, B-H-U-I-Y-A-N. And I'm here on behalf of my class, of the nonprofit Animal Protection Group. So a brief statement. In response to the city's proposal to lift a ban on ownership of ferrets as pets, we respectfully submit our position and concerns. We support having ferrets as pets, provided that animals are sourced from shelters or rescues. Ferrets sold in pet shops are often sourced from massive breeding operations where they are bred in abhorrent conditions. For years, pet stores that sell small animals have not sold ferrets because there was no market due to the ban on ferret ownership as pets. Allowing ownership would create an unwelcome new market for the ferret trade. Pet stores should not be permitted to offer ferrets for sale as they would inevitably end up in the city's already overburdened animal shelters. In summary, we support lifting the ban on ferret ownership on the condition that the city council pass legislation banning the commercial sale of ferrets in pet stores. Thank you.
I do not have any other persons registered to speak. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak but has not registered? If not, then this hearing is going to be closed temporarily, and we will resume again at ten minutes before four. The hearing is scheduled to go from two to four. Any speaking, we're going back on line. Going back on record. The time is now three forty-five, and we are back on the record. There's another person who has indicated her intent to speak. Ms. Regis, would you please come up to the right and press the button and put the speaker on and spell your name for the reporter and announce any affiliation if you have any.
Hello, my name is Shanice Regis. I have no direct affiliation, but I am a ferret owner. My comment today, and thank you for opening up this topic for a public assembly, I felt like it was my duty as a ferret owner to be here to speak on behalf of the pets that I've groomed who I have and form a relationship with. I currently live a active lifestyle in which I work full-time. I'm also a full-time student and I play an extracurricular activity called roller derby. So my chances of having a dog is not very practical and I'm not a cat person. So when I acquired my first ferret, I was living in St. Alden's, which is in the back of South Queens. And I was able to walk to a pet store in my area and purchase my ferret. But this pet store is in Long Island. Even though I'm on the border of Queens and Long Island, I found it really peculiar that it's accessible a mile away from my house, but it's illegal for them to live in my house. To speak a little bit of ferrets, I've read several articles about people kind of condemning them because they don't understand them or even that famous Rudy Giuliani kind of going in on an individual who was trying to speak up about them. And I get not every pet is for everyone, but to say that it should be banned because of whatever findings that you say that I don't really think holds any truth, I think would be unfair and even though some people might not want to own them for yourselves, shouldn't mean that those who do want them should have that cloud hanging over them that their pet, that they formed a relationship, could be confiscated and put down if it was ever found out that they have them. To mention a little bit of my own understanding of the ferrets, again, I'm with no association, so I'm not well-versed in this matter. But ferrets are really, they're like a puppy, but as clean as a cat and very inquisitive. And I've never had that kind of connection with any other cage animal, like a guinea pig or bunny or a hamster. You get the best of both worlds. And for somebody like me and my situation that might have an issue with space or time commitment, I feel like they're perfect pets. And to compare them about them possibly carrying rabies and if they ever get out and over producing, a rabbit could do the same thing, a guinea pig could produce the same outcome as these. And if that's the only holding argument as to why they should remain banned, I feel like those other pets should be reviewed, but I don't think it should go to that step. I feel like if it's not a detriment to the community and it's not a detriment to the environment and you could push other retailers or rescue centers or foster homes to follow certain protocols that you do for the same animals, like cats, dogs, ferrets, rabbits, and reptiles, then it should go the same for ferrets. and reptiles, then it should go the same for ferrets. And that's all, but thank you for the opportunity to hear us ferret enthusiasts out. It's really appreciated, and I hope it's considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here who would like to speak, who has not registered to speak? All right, it's ten minutes to four, and there being no other people here to speak, I'm going to close this hearing.